Call the order of a joint CFD meeting open to the public on Monday, 22 June. The agenda includes the CFDs from the City of Goodyear, Community Facilities General District Number One, Palm Valley Community Facilities District Number Three, Community Facilities Utilities District Number One, Wildflower Ranch CFD One, Ian Wildflower Ranch CFD Two, Cotton Flower CFD, Estrella Mountain Ranch CFD, King Ranch CFD, Centerra CFD, and Cortina CFD. All of the members of the board are in attendance this evening. We have no expenditures to ratify or communications. Are there any citizens who would like to comment on a non-agenda item? Okay, I asked the clerk to read the consent items A and B by title only, please.
Item A, approve minutes of the joint special meeting of the Community Facilities Districts held on June 4th, 2009. Item B, approve the transfer of five parcels of property currently held in the name of Community Facilities General District Number One by special warranty deed to the City of Goodyear.
Would anyone on the public wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Would anyone on council, board, CFD board wish to remove an item from the consent? Seeing none, could I have a motion and a second, please?
Uh-oh. Second.
Have a motion and a second from board members Sousa and Antoniak. Could I have a roll call vote?
Vice Chairman Lord?
Aye.
Board Member Sousa?
Aye.
Board Member Cavalier?
Aye.
Board Member Antoniak?
Aye.
Board Member Osborne?
Aye.
Board Member Pizzillo?
Aye.
Chairman Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Passes seven zero.
Okay, we're gonna go through the ten CFDs. I'll conduct one public hearing for all CFDs at one time, and subsequent to that, we will take comments from the public, of course, and then we will vote on each resolution separately and individually. And if, why don't we just do it as we've done it before? Board Member Antoniak, if you would read the motion and, well, Joe, you wanna do the seconds since Brenda's, you're replacing Brenda.
That's fine.
All right, good, so that way we'll be consistent and we'll get through it.
That was Joe's first vote, by the way. It was an exciting one.
Doesn't have jacket on.
There'll be more of those.
Okay, Sheila, one second. The district board will conduct a public hearing to receive comments for or against any of the final expenditures and tax levy for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2009, and ending June 30, 2010. One public hearing will be conducted for all ten CFDs. Open the public hearing, and Sheila Mills.
Good evening, Chair and Kavanaugh and board members. The items before the district boards are the final budgets for the fiscal year 2009, 2010 fiscal year for each of the individual ten community facilities districts. On June 4th, the tentative budgets were presented to the board. A public hearing is required by law to receive any comments from any taxpayer in the district relating to the final budget and for the tax levy for each CFD. The legal notice was published in the newspaper as required, and the meeting for the adoption of the property tax levy will actually be held on July 13th. The final budgets include expenditures for operations and maintenance, debt service, and capital improvement projects. The property taxes are the approximate levies based upon the secondary assessed valuation of the preliminary numbers that we received in February. No changes have been made to any of the tentative budgets from that meeting. CFDs with capital improvement project budgets either include a portion or the remaining general obligation bonding authority, both for the utilities and Estrella Mountain Ranch Communities, Estrella Mountain Ranch Community Facilities District has some remaining proceeds from prior approved bond issues. So those would be the only ones that actually have outstanding bond issues that haven't been spent yet. On July 14th of 2008, the district board for the Palm Valley Community Facilities District Number Three approved a resolution to authorize the issuance and sale of general obligation bonds not to exceed $6.1 million. However, due to economic conditions, the developer requested these bonds to be pulled, so we have not sold that bond, so it's still out there remaining with approval to sell that bond. Only one developer requested a budget to be included in this year's fiscal year budget, and they were told that due to economic conditions, that that may not take place. However, we did include it in the budget. The property tax rates presented are the approximate combined rates, which includes the general operations, the general fund operations and maintenance, and the debt service for the general obligation bond debt. The property tax revenue is per each $100 of secondary assessed valuation. The resolutions that are, you will be approving tonight will be for each respective district for the fiscal year budget of 2009, 2010. This concludes my presentation, and I would entertain any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have any comments from the public? Again, this is a public hearing. Any comments from the public? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, and I'll ask the clerk to read the first one. Community Facilities General District Number One, Resolution 09149 by title only.
Adopt Resolution CFGD Number One, Resolution 09-149, approving the final budget by the Goodyear Community Facilities General District Number One Board for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2009, and ending June 30, 2010.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the resolution of CFGD Number One, Resolution 09149, as read by the clerk.
Second motion. Open for discussion? Okay, seeing-
I've got a question.
Yes.
You showed me a little bit earlier a breakdown of the rates prior in '08 and the current rates in '09.
Yes.
Did you have that that you could share with us?
Yes. Can I have Almo, please? Chairman Kavanaugh and Board Member Pizzillo and others. Basically, what Board Member Pizzillo asked for was he wanted to know what the rates were compared to this fiscal year or tax year 2008 compared to what they would be in tax year 2009 or fiscal year 2009, 2010. If you look at the presentation up there, you can see that the first one, which is these amounts here, that is the combined amount for property tax in fiscal year 2009, 2010. That's for operations and maintenance and debt service for the general obligation bond debt. Economic conditions, the secondary assessed valuation has dropped in most all these community facilities districts. So you could have an increase in property tax rate for next year due to that decrease. Also, if there's an increase, there could have been, or a decrease. It could be due, if we have a decrease, it could be possibly due to we had additional revenues in the debt service fund, or we had less expenditures that we're expecting in the O and M for the operations and maintenance. So then you can have a decrease. So if you look at the far end, that is the fiscal year '08, '09 combined property tax for the CFDs currently. Slide that over, it didn't look like it's over on that one. So in the case of the general district, which is the first one on the sheet, you'll see that in tax year 2009, 2008, 2009, it is .5313 per each $100 of secondary assessed valuation. That is in for this fiscal year. We are projecting that in next fiscal year, that it would be .6555. So the debt service is still out there. There may be additional expenditures in the O and M, but we have to increase the tax. And if you can really look at it, you see that the O and M, we're actually reducing the O and M down to .03, and the other one for this year is .05. So we're actually increasing the debt service portion, and that more than likely is due to the assessed valuation dropping. Is there any question in any other specific CFD?
No, thank you.
Any other questions?
Hold on one second. I wanna make sure I'm comprehending that correctly. So the column on the far right-hand side is the FY '08, '09 combined rate, and then the column that's four N, five N, the approximate combined, the delta between those two are the increase or decrease in the total, correct? So in the first one, Community Facility General District Number One, we're seeing roughly a .12 increase, total dollar amount in people's probably expenditures, equivalent of what they paid last year in a dollar amount, given that the assessments have gone down, correct?
Your secondary assessed valuation, if you're looking at the general district, and that would be the .5313, just to use that as an example.
Right.
The middle column that you see here is what we, when they formed the CFD, that was supposed to be the maximum amount.
Right.
So this column here is what is going to be what we're projecting for fiscal year '09, '10, or tax year 2009. The increase, you'll see that we increased the debt service portion. The debt service is still out there, but the assessed valuation dropped, so we actually had to increase that amount. The O and M, we didn't need as much, so we actually dropped that amount. So you can see that that dropped from the .05 down to the .03.
Why such a big difference? Well, we'll get to that one next. I'll ask that one next. I'm good.
You wanna ask it now?
Well, I mean, while we're on the subject, if you'll allow it, okay. On Palm Valley Community Facility District Three, why such a big difference in that one, then?
In Palm Valley CFD Number Three, that's where I said that we actually had a bond issue that was actually approved. We did the property tax, but we never sold the bond. So it has more in debt service than we needed, so what we're doing is we're lowering the property tax. They don't expect to sell a bond this coming year either, but they could. But we still have additional funds on hand, and we need to use those funds, so we actually are lowering that property tax rate.
So the funds in the bank-
Correct.
-could accommodate that bond sale for next year?
We can make the bond payment for what we currently have. If they sell a bond, that's only if, probably we'll bring it back to you because it's been so long ago, because it was approved back in July. We were actually going to actually sell that particular bond in September, so we may come back to you just to go ahead and say, here's what we're gonna do, or if they wanna change the feasibility report. So we're only looking at what the debt service is for that fiscal year of 2009, 2010, not even taking into any consideration of selling a bond.
Which, remind me of the general area, is three the one that covers all of everybody?
Palm Valley CFD Number Three.
It's Palm Valley Eight, isn't it?
Well, it's north of Indian School.
Okay.
And it's on the western part, whereas around the 303, and part of the southern part down just above south of McDowell.
So we don't have many-
So it just skirts around-
Do we have any single-family residents in there right now?
Yes.
We do.
I lived there.
Oh, wait, wait a second. I missed the boundaries, then. Tell me the boundaries.
Go ahead.
Yes.
Much of it is commercial.
Correct, there is some commercial out on the western part of the 303.
It's external to Pebble Creek.
Yes, but there, on the northern part where you see-
Okay.
-the northern part of Indian School is where your residential, a lot of your residential is for the Palm Valley CFD Number Three.
Well, in the south, that neighborhood, southwest of Pebble Creek, and west of Pebble Creek is in there, too.
Yes.
Okay.
Pebble Creek, per se, is only part of the utilities district.
Right, right.
That's correct.
It's always handy to, anyway.
You know, while we're on this chart, though, I know we're moving ahead, but I think everybody's got in front of them. If, you know, economic difficulties are keeping the rates low, but they aren't for Cotton Flower or Centerra. Can you just, I'm sure there's a reason for that.
You know, since I've been on this, we ask that every year because we're so astounded at the, what it is for that community.
Spread between.
Well, Cotton Flower has only two bonds outstanding, so we just look at the debt service, what we're looking at, and we can only go by what we have as outstanding debt service for next fiscal year. So if there's any funds that we would have received, that we had from delinquent property tax collections and anything on hand, then we actually have to take that into consideration for next year. We use the property tax, we actually do it as a 95% collection ratio. So we actually over-collect, thinking that we're only going to get 95%. So if we get all of it, if we get 100%, of course, we're going to have to reduce it the next year because we're gonna have those additional funds.
So these are carrying charges on existing bonds?
Yes.
Really? The economic activity may not be relevant in that particular rate at this time. The economic activity at this time may not be relevant.
Every district actually dropped in assessed valuation, which I'll do in a presentation later. They all dropped except for Centerra. Centerra increased by 1.31%, but everybody else decreased.
The drop has an upward pressure on the per hundred?
Yes.
Ratio, yeah.
Is there a different, any other ones that you would like to talk about? You said, I think there was another one.
That's okay, I got the general idea. And again, if anyone wants to ask a question while we proceed this, you're welcome to do that. But we'll do the first one, and that's 09149, on last for roll call vote.
Board Member Sousa?
Aye.
Board Member Cavalier?
Aye.
Board Member Antoniak?
Aye.
Board Member Osborne?
Aye.
Board Member Pizzillo?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Lord?
Aye.
Chairman Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Passes seven zero.
Okay, will the clerk read the resolution for Palm Valley CFD Number Three?
Adopt Resolution PVCFD Number Three, Resolution 09-023, approving the final budget by the Palm Valley Community Facilities District Number Three Board for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2009, and ending June 30, 2010.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the resolution, as read by the clerk.
Second.
Discussion? Could I have a roll call vote, please?
Board Member Cavalier?
Aye.
Board Member Antoniak?
Aye.
Board Member Osborne?
Aye.
Board Member Pizzillo?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Lord?
Aye.
Board Member Sousa?
Aye.
Chairman Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Passes seven zero.
Will the clerk read the resolution for Community Facilities Utility District Number One?
Adopt Resolution CFUD Number One, Resolution 09-070, approving the final budget by the Goodyear Community Facilities Utilities District Number One Board for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2009, and ending June 30, 2010.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt Resolution CFUD Number One, Resolution 09-070, as read by the clerk.
Have a motion and a second. Roll call vote?
Board Member Antoniak?
Aye.
Board Member Osborne?
Aye.
Board Member Pizzillo?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Lord?
Aye.
Board Member Sousa?
Aye.
Board Member Cavalier?
Aye.
Chairman Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Passes seven zero.
Will the clerk read the resolution for Wildflower Ranch CFD?
Adopt Resolution WFRCFGD Number One, Resolution 09-040, approving the final budget by the Wildflower Ranch Community Facilities General District Number One Board for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2009, and ending June 30, 2010.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt Resolution WFRCFGD Number One, Resolution 09-040, as read by the clerk.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Board Member Osborne?
Aye.
Board Member Pizzillo?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Lord?
Aye.
Board Member Sousa?
Aye.
Board Member Cavalier?
Aye.
Board Member Antoniak?
Aye.
Chairman Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Passes seven zero.
Will the clerk read the resolution for Wildflower Ranch CFD Number Two?
Adopt Resolution WFRCFGD Number Two, Resolution 09-035, approving the final budget by the Wildflower Ranch Community Facilities General District Number Two Board for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2009, and ending June 30, 2010.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt Resolution WFRCFGD Number Two, Resolution 09-035, as read by the clerk.
Open for discussion? Roll call vote?
Board Member Pizzillo?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Lord?
Aye.
Board Member Sousa?
Aye.
Board Member Cavalier?
Aye.
Board Member Antoniak?
Aye.
Board Member Osborne?
Aye.
Chairman Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Passes seven zero.
Will the clerk read the resolution for Cotton Flower CFD?
Adopt Resolution CTTNFLWRCFD, Resolution 09-033, approving the final budget by the Cotton Flower Community Facilities District Board for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2009, and ending June 30, 2010.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt Resolution CTTNFLWRCFD, Resolution 09-033, as read by the clerk.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Vice Chairman Lord?
Aye.
Board Member Sousa?
Aye.
Board Member Cavalier?
Aye.
Board Member Antoniak?
Aye.
Board Member Osborne?
Aye.
Board Member Pizzillo?
Aye.
Chairman Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Passes seven zero.
Will the clerk read the resolution for EMRCFD?
Adopt Resolution EMRCFD, Resolution 09-070, approving the final budget by the Estrella Mountain Ranch Community Facilities District Board for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2009, and ending June 30, 2010.
Mr. Chairman, I move the adoption of Resolution EMRCFD, Resolution 09-070, as read by the clerk.
Open for discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Board Member Sousa?
Aye.
Board Member Cavalier?
Aye.
Board Member Antoniak?
Aye.
Board Member Osborne?
Aye.
Board Member Pizzillo?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Lord?
Aye.
Chairman Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Passes seven zero.
Will the clerk read the resolution for King Ranch CFD?
Adopt Resolution KRCFD, Resolution 09-010, approving the final budget by the King Ranch Community Facilities District Board for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2009, and ending June 30, 2010.
Mr. Chairman, I move the adoption of KRCFD, Resolution 09-010, as read by the clerk.
Roll call.
Board Member Cavalier?
Aye.
Board Member Antoniak?
Aye.
Board Member Osborne?
Aye.
Board Member Pizzillo?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Lord?
Aye.
Board Member Sousa?
Aye.
Chairman Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Passes seven zero.
Will the clerk read the resolution for Centerra CFD?
Adopt Resolution Centerra CFD, Resolution 09-033, approving the final budget by the Centerra Community Facilities District Board for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2009, and ending June 30, 2010.
Mr. Chairman, I move adoption of Centerra CFD, Resolution 09-033, as read by the clerk.
Open for discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Board Member Antoniak?
Aye.
Board Member Osborne?
Aye.
Board Member Pizzillo?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Lord?
Aye.
Board Member Sousa?
Aye.
Board Member Cavalier?
Aye.
Chairman Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Passes seven zero.
Ask the clerk to read resolution for Cortina CFD?
Adopt Resolution Cortina CFD, Resolution 09-028, approving the final budget by the Cortina Community Facilities District Board for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2009, and ending June 30, 2010.
Mr. Chairman, I move adoption of Cortina CFD, Resolution 09-028, as read by the clerk.
Motion and second. Open for discussion? Roll call vote?
Board Member Osborne?
Aye.
Board Member Pizzillo?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Lord?
Aye.
Board Member Sousa?
Aye.
Board Member Cavalier?
Aye.
Board Member Antoniak?
Aye.
Chairman Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Passes seven zero.
Okay, thank you. We will now consider adoption of a resolution to authorize the execution and delivery of a substitute collateral deposit agreement. Larry Lang.
Thank you, Chairman Kavanaugh. Resolution 09-071 provides for a substitute collateral deposit for a standby agreement. We entered into an original standby agreement, in this case with Suncor, for general obligation bonds issued in the utilities district. The debt service on those bonds exceeded the maximum property tax rate that was approved in the formation of the district. The standby agreement is the guarantee from the developer to pay that excess premium over that rate. Included in that standby agreement was a financial means requirement that they were required to maintain equity levels that would meet certain standards, 25 times the annual debt service and five times the annual outstanding debt of this and similar related debt. Due to the recent Suncor announcement to sell its residential development, Suncor has had to take a write-down of certain residential properties on its financial statements. As a result of that, equity for Suncor reduced down to approximately $48.5 million. The amounts required by the standby agreement and by the financial means tests would have been $63 million for one test and 58 for the other, so that put them short on those requirements. I want to point out that all payments from Suncor remain current, and we have every reason to believe that they will remain current moving forward. This is about a financial means test that is in the bond agreements agreed to by all parties. The agreement does permit amongst various remedies, it permits the CFD to approve revisions to the agreement that would allow, or that would remedy the situation at the discretion of the CFD. We have negotiated the agreement that is presented before you that will have Suncor place a million dollars into a trust agreement with the paying agent for the bonds. The million dollars represents one year's extra debt service that they would be required to pay. There will not be debt service coming out of this. They will pay their debt service in addition to this million dollars. At the end of one year, we will review the financial tests again to see if they've come back into compliance. They believe after they have sold the property that they will come back into compliance, but as we all know, we're in an uncertain real estate market, there are no assurances. So the provision is that at the end of the year, we can look at it again, we can take that million dollars and call bonds, but we can control where that goes unless they meet, meet the test, then the money reverts back to them. I'll answer any questions you may have.
Sure, we'll have questions. Let me go to the public first. Standby, if you would. Comments from the public? Mr. Matlin?
I just wanted to confirm-
Could you introduce yourself? I know you've done that before, but-
Roger Matlin, resident here in Goodyear, live up in Estrella Mountain, and I think this Suncor transaction you're talking about would have an impact on me. Is that correct?
Will not.
Will not?
No.
Oh, okay, this is different properties for Suncor?
This is Palm Valley.
Okay, this is for Palm Valley, okay. Well, then nonetheless, then trying to be a good resident and finance person for the people of Palm Valley, then, I just wanted to confirm the obligation for Suncor. Is it, is there a requirement that they pay down the amount of debt or do something else to assure that they are meeting the requirements of this? Just because they've written down assets doesn't mean they should be able to get out of the debt. It kinda sounds like an investment bank trying to scramble out of something they made a mistake on. So is, are there other options to this? Were they required to stay with their obligations?
Let me, let us respond to your comment right now. Larry?
Yes, let me clarify on this. They are not getting rid of any obligations to pay that extra million dollars per year. What this obligation does is provide additional collateral over and above, above what we had before because their equity went down. They still are responsible for that debt service. This isn't changing that. There was an option in the agreement to require them to call the proportionate amount of the debt. We were very concerned about that. That would have been some $14 million was an estimate that we had. And requiring them to come up with that cash in a short period of time, we think could have created bigger problems for us than doing this.
Thank you.
Did you understand, Mr. Matlin?
Well, I have a follow-up question to that. Is the debt service part of the equity obligation? Or is the... Is there no equity obligation? They're only obligated to pay the debt service?
They're obligated to pay the debt service. What the equity obligation is, is an obligation of, if you will, financial worth, kind of like the bank stress tests that you're hearing at the federal level. And because they fell below, that's why we had to add an additional $1 million deposit so that they could cover their annual payments. But it did not relieve the other obligation.
Appreciation.
Okay, those other obligations being what?
The excess of the debt service over the property tax levy, which is about $1 million a year at today's level.
Okay. Do they have an equity obligation?
Yes.
Meaning when it comes to the maturity of the bond, are they required to pay their portion of it?
No. They are required to pay a portion of the annual payments each year. And they are current on those payments. They do not have... It's not equity in the sense of an investment. It's how much equity their company has that we're concerned about.
Mr. Chairman, can I get some clarification? Are you meaning principal and interest? Is that what you're getting at, Mr. Matlin? Are they responsible for principal and interest? And those payments do cover principal and interest, correct?
That is correct.
Does that help you out?
But that the principal portion remains over the amortization of the bond? So I'm just confirming they're not getting out of their obligation for that principal over the term of the debt. This is only that they're putting up additional funds to cover their, so to speak, stress test failure.
And I would confirm that.
Yes, thank you. Okay, could I have a... No, ask the clerk to read the resolution by title only.
Adopt Resolution CFUD Number 1 Resolution 09-071, approving the form and authorizing the execution and delivery of a substitute collateral deposit agreement to partially secure the payment of its district general obligation bonds, Series 2003, district general obligation bonds, Series 2005, and district general obligation bonds, Series 2007.
Okay, thank you. Could I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt Resolution CFUD Number 1 Resolution 09-071. It's read by the clerk.
Okay, I have a motion from Board Member Antoniak and a second from Board Member Sousa. It's open for discussion? No?
I'm good.
Over here? Larry, how about the other two CFDs that Suncor has?
They do not have standby agreements on them at this point, and so therefore this requirement doesn't match. We do have standby agreements in at least one other CFD, but it is in compliance, and that's in Australia Mountain Ranch.
And this isn't costing the citizens a dollar, correct?
This is trying to protect that it doesn't cost the citizens a dollar in the future. That's correct.
Okay. Could I have a roll call vote?
Board Member Pizzillo?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Lord?
Aye.
Board Member Sousa?
Aye.
Board Member Cavalier?
Aye.
Board Member Antoniak?
Aye.
Board Member Osborn?
Aye.
Chairman Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Passes seven zero.
Okay, thank you, Larry. And Mr. Matlin, thank you. We'll now receive an update from Sheila Mills on the special assessment collections with the CFDs. And no action will be taken strictly for information, correct?
Yes. Chairman Kavanaugh and board members, the overview that we're going to give you tonight is just information only. We thought due to economic conditions, we were providing this information relating to general obligation bonds, special assessment bonds, and the impacts to the debt service. Comparison of actual secondary assessed valuation. We'll show you a slide on that for 2008 tax year versus the preliminary information that we got for 2009 tax year. We got the percentage of property tax collections, which I spoke a little bit about this earlier in the meeting, about the 95% tax ratio that we expect in collections, and what impacts, if any, to the debt service and special assessments billed and their delinquency. This slide here, it gives you information that we got from Maricopa County Assessor's Office. And that, if you can see on there, it has the actual tax year 2008, secondary assessed valuation. And then in the second column, it shows the preliminary number that we received in February for the tax year 2009. The third column shows you the difference, what we show from tax year 2009 back to 2008. As you can see in the red, they're the ones that are going down. And as I mentioned, Sentera CFD is the only one that is actually increasing, and it's only by 1.3%. The overall is a negative of 7.69%. However, you also have the community facilities general district overlapping a portion of the utilities district. So some of that percentage is in the utilities district, as well as Palm Valley CFD Number 3 overlapping a portion of the utilities district, but not overlapping the general district. So that portion is also included in the utilities district. The utilities district is the largest district north of the freeway.
Just a quick question, if you go back to that one. When you're saying tax year '08, that's '08, '09, and '09, '10 is the one we're in today. Greg?
That is correct. Chairman Kavanaugh and board members, tax year 2008 is in fiscal year '08, '09, which is the current year that we are in. For tax year 2009, that would be fiscal year '09, '10.
Which is the one...
That we were going to be in July 1 of 2009.
Okay, all right.
Mayor, can I have a quick question?
Yeah.
Quick question, Sheila. On the utilities district, let's see the drop of the 27... Was that a million?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The question I have is, I know my residential dropped 26% in that same period of time. Is it assumed to say since it's only 7%? If it wasn't for commercial, it would be in a much worse shape?
You actually have residential and commercial in the utilities district because it is the one that encompasses the large portion up there. That's why I said the general district only overlaps an eastern portion of the district. The Palm Valley CFD Number 3, it overlaps a northern portion, a western portion, and a southern portion. But the main portion is where the Pebble Creek area is, and that is only the one district. That is just the utilities district. So it's not overlapped by any of the other two. So you have a lot... You have commercial as well as residential. So that's why you probably have that discrepancy. Whereas in Palm Valley, you have some residential, but you also have a majority of commercial in that area.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The next slide here is for the property tax collections. And what I did is I took all the fiscal years back to 2002 and came forward through the current fiscal year. And what I did is I showed only the property tax collections that we knew at, that was collected and received through May of 2000... Or of each of those fiscal years. So you can see that it dropped below the 95% in two years, but we had enough money in the collections that we were able to make the general obligation bond debt. And that's... You also have to take into consideration that those funds are earning interest out there as we collect those funds. So there's interest earnings as well that's also being used in those debt service payments for the general obligation bond debt.
Oh, yeah.
For the special assessments, we actually have two community facilities districts that have special assessments. The first one was the general district, the community facilities general district Number 1. It had two assessment bonds. One was actually in 1994, the other one in 1996. The '94 issue has been completely paid off. In the '96, we actually are paying it down as we're going, and we probably won't go out as long as the debt service keeps continuing to be paid down. We also have Australia Mountain Ranch CFD. They have two assessment areas... Or four assessment areas, excuse me. The Gulf Village Assessment District, the Desert Village Assessment District, the Montecito Assessment District, and the Gulf Village Assessment District Number 2. There's two ways that can be billed for the assessments. If it was prior to the law change a couple of years ago by the Arizona State, it has to be individually billed, and they're billed semi-annually. Those payments are due June 1 and December 1. The June 1 billing has a principal, interest, and an admin fee. The December 1 payment has an interest only and an admin fee. So we bill that twice a year. And most of the districts have that except for the last two. The last two, the Montecito and the Gulf Village Assessment District Number 2, since the law changed, we can actually add that on to the property tax bill. And we have done that. However, in the first year that we had Montecito, we actually put everything on the property tax bill. We had some issues with the county because that was the first time it happened. So anything that's not to the lot level, they do not want on the property tax bill because there's a possibility of a lot split in the assessment. They don't know how to apply that on the property tax bill. So those will not get billed on there. If we had a problem that somebody didn't make their property tax payments, that meant that they didn't make their assessment payment. So what we did is we looked at that also, and we said if they didn't pay that on time, we also were able to, the next year, take that off the property tax and not include it on the property tax bill. But those delinquent ones would go through the regular property tax collection process that the county does.
Now, these billings are made by the county. Is that correct?
That is incorrect. We actually have the billings. The assessments are our billings for each of those assessment areas. So what we do is we actually have a company that does our billings for us, the individual billings. And that's in most of the districts except for the last two, the Montecito Assessment District and Australia Mountain Ranch, and also the Gulf Village Assessment District Number 2. Those two, they can be individually billed or they can be billed on the property tax bill, as I was stating. So Wildan Financial Services actually produces the bills that go out. And they'll send them out... They'll send the June bill that's due June 1. They send them out late April, beginning of May with a June 1 due date. And then the December bills that are individually billed, they send those out late October, beginning of November, and they're due December 1. Now, on the ones that go for the property... On the property tax bill, the ones that we've actually added to those, they still perform the same thing. They have to calculate what those payments are going to be, but they're calculating it for the fiscal year that would be collected on the property tax bill. So they have the December payment and the July... The June payment. So it'd be the December payment, like for tax year 2008, which we're in currently in fiscal year '08, '09, that would have been the December 1 payment of 2008 and the June 1 payment of 2009 that would have been included on the property tax bill that was due this tax year.
Sheila, we had talked about this before when we had the problem of people not understanding what they were paying when you get... When they got the separate bill and they weren't prepared for it. So we talked about this. What if we did it on a regular tax bill? So what has the response been? What is the difference between the response of sending it out in this manner? Have you noted any?
On the property tax bill, we have issues there as well because we actually had in our Australia Mountain Ranch CFD, the Montecito where I said that we did our first billing out there in last fiscal year, '07, '08. We actually did all the billings on the property tax bill. We had issues because if it was not down to the lot level, we had issues with that. So the county does not want us to put anything that's not down to the lot level. If it was on there and they didn't pay their property tax bill, that meant they were delinquent. So what we did is we have the option to pull them off for next year. So in tax year 2008, 2009, we don't include them on the property tax bill, and we individually bill them. And we do that just in case we have those ones that don't pay and we have delinquencies because we can foreclose on that delinquency faster and get those funds back that we need to make those debt service payments.
On a separate billing?
On a separate billing, yeah. So they could have had it on the tax bill, like in Montecito's case. There was 153, I think, in 50... 2008... Seven, 2008 fiscal year that weren't paid, and it was by one home builder. They didn't make their payments. So what we did is we didn't include them on the next time we did individual bills for December and June of this year. And so to try and get those payments.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Sheila, on that, who... You keep saying they... I'm assuming you mean the county. Who tracks this? Who does the tracking? Who makes certain that these billings went through, go through the way they do, as you were talking about?
Wildan Financial Services is our contractor that actually does our billings for all of our CFDs. So they actually track those payments. Any payments that we get in at the city's office, we send them that information. We actually have a lock box for the Australia Mountain Ranch. So people do send to that lock box. That information is also sent to Wildan. And the county information is also sent to Wildan, and they update the spreadsheets as well. So we get all that information updated through Wildan, and we get a spreadsheet weekly from them.
Okay, who pays for the use of the... Wildan, whoever that is.
The contractor?
The contractor, yeah.
Yes, we include an administrative fee that's out there in each one of those bills. Currently, it's not...
It's not the city pays for that?
No.
Okay.
No. There's no payment by the city. It's all by the CFD, but it's all included in the admin fee that's collected in the assessment billing.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
This chart here is what I wanted to show you with some information. I put some numbers up there. So you can see there, these are the ones that are individually billed assessments. So if you look at... We have several payments out there, but if you just happen to look at the June 1 of 2009 bills out there that we had sent out, we actually had 2,041 bills that were actually individually sent to property owners. Of those 2,041, we had 697 that were delinquent after June 1. Of those, we haven't sent any to our attorney for starting the foreclosure process, but that's because we just got through that process. But if you look down at the December 1 of 2008, we sent 193 people into the attorney's office for the delinquencies. And you can see that over the years, it's varied, but it has considerably come in... It's going up and staying a little higher. That 697 delinquent accounts, we've actually gotten that down to about 393. And that was as of last week.
Do we... Question.
Sure.
Do we track why they're delinquent? Do we ask why they're delinquent and keep track of that?
We don't ask them why they're delinquent. I think some of the reasons in when we actually... Before we even send them to the attorney's office, we try and make contact and get those payments. Sometimes we're told that they're in foreclosure. So if they're in foreclosure, a lot of times, we won't get their payment. Sometimes they're in bankruptcy, and we can't even go further in the process to foreclose on that delinquent assessment. So that's why some of them get lingered out a little bit longer.
I guess I would expect I guess I would expect in the climate that we're in right now, the number of delinquent accounts sent to the attorney to rise, but I'm not necessarily seeing any trend in that number of delinquent accounts on the due date. I'm not seeing it change from back when we had the discussion in '06, the percentages are still the, still the same, and I'm, I'm just wondering maybe if there's a, we've talked about this in the past in terms of education effort and that sort of thing, but it comes as a separate bill.
A lot of the people know, a lot of the people know because they've been getting them for years and years. The newer ones are the Montecito and the Gulf Village, and a majority of them, we try and put them on the property tax bill, but that's not always the case. If you see in the December 1 of 2008, where you see the 193, we had 154 that was in Montecito by one home builder that was delinquent.
Okay, that's, that's helpful, actually.
We actually got the payment for the December, but we still don't have the, the June payment.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I, I think I remember that we came before, you came before us, and we asked her, remember, to make more additional phone calls?
Yeah, no, no, I'm, I'm...
Personal phone calls, but we did make that a more personal attempt to try to help the ownership.
We've, we've made numerous phone calls, and I even try and make other contacts. Sometimes we even go, if we can find the mortgage company, we'll contact the mortgage company and see if they'll pay. Sometimes they do, sometimes they don't, it just depends. A lot of times, we even get contacted by another attorney's office, they're in the forec, bankruptcy, or foreclosure process, and they'll, they'll contact us and see about, is this property in foreclosure or delinquent, and if it is, they want to know what it is and how much to pay it current. So a lot of times, we get payments that way as well, through those, those different sources.
Okay.
The next slide, that's the one that where I'm, we said about putting it on the annual property tax bill. You'll see the numbers are much lower, but that's because we only have two districts that we actually have sold bonds on after the law change. But there you can see, in the, the December of 2007, we had 167 that we billed, but of course, the number in June won't change because it's the annual billing, but we had, we had 100% collection as of that December 1st. What happened, though, in, in June, we didn't get the 100%, so we had 250 people that were on the property tax bills that didn't pay those assessments. So they were the ones that we looked at. If they paid late, or they didn't pay at all, that it wasn't current at all, we actually pulled them off the property tax bill, and that's why the numbers would go up on the previous chart, you know, so, because we individually billed them. This next slide is about the delinquent special assessments. What we've done is, is once we go into the delinquency, and we've done all the times trying to, to make contact with property owners or anybody else that we can, that has interest in the property, if we can find out, to get those payments to bring them current, then we go ahead and we, we send a list to our attorney, and they go ahead and start the foreclosure process to try and collect the money. They send out letters as well and try and contact the people as well. As you can see, we've actually had five sales. The December of 2008 has not had a sale yet, but some of those sales might have included prior assessments that were delinquent, but we just didn't have contact with those companies or those people to try and bring them current. If we don't have contact, we try and go at least one more billing to try and make contact with those people to bring them current, and if not, then we go in and we'll actually do the sale. So you can see we had five sales, you can see the numbers varied. We actually had a, a big increase in, in 2000, December of 2007. It went down a little bit, but our, our numbers for the number of delinquencies has increased considerably, and that's probably due to the economic conditions as well. Also on this chart, you can see that the, the red includes the number of delinquencies that actually went to sale. So we might have turned over 49 accounts in the first one, but we only went and sold three of them. So we got payments to bring those other ones current. Of those three, we actually had, so, once they're sold, they get a certificate of sale, whoever purchases that delinquency, and then what they, the property owner has a year to go ahead and pay that back, plus the interest according to the Arizona State revised statutes. And all three of those were actually collected and redeemed, so the purchaser got their funds back, plus the interest, and no one lost their property. We have not had anyone lose their property, and that's not what we're trying to do, we're just trying to collect the assessments that are out there. The impact of the, of the delinquencies. As I stated, for the general obligation bonds, we do a 95% collection. So what we're doing is when we're setting that property tax rate, we're saying that we're only going to collect 95%. We're assuming that. So that rate would be a little bit higher. That's why you would use that rate, whatever, if we get 100% of it, the next year, we'd actually reduce it. We'd have to include that as additional funds on hand and look at what we need for the debt service the next time. To date, we've always had sufficient funds to make the general obligation bond debt, either through those collections and/or the interest that we actually had, or in the case like the Utilities District, where we actually had a standby contribution agreement, whatever the shortfall is, that developer has to come in with that contribution based upon that standby contribution agreement. In your special assessments, we can only bill 100%. So all the things that we bill are 100%, we assume 100% collection, but we know, of course, we do not get 100% collection. So the collections are not sufficient to make the debt service payments. If we don't have enough money on hand to make those payments, then what we need to do is we need to draw on the reserve funds. And when we draw on the reserve funds, what happens is we have to make disclosure nationally to the clearinghouses that we had to draw funds out of those bond reserves. And then when we get the collections, then we are supposed to refund that money and put it back into the reserve funds. Anyone have any questions?
Questions? Nice briefing, very tough time, though. Not good news.
Good explanation.
Thank you, Sheila.
Okay, strictly for information, would any board member or city manager wish to give a report?
No.
Board Member Antoniac?
Just for future reference when we're dealing with this, can we start putting the maps in there again? The general map that has all the CFDs?
Thank you. Okay, let's see. We'll use that clock, that's the right one, and it looks like we can start at six, so we'll start at six o'clock for our regular meeting, and this meeting is adjourned.